So Grace or Mary, do you have the public hearing notice?
I didn't have a chance to find it. Did you find it, Grace? No, that's not good. It didn't make it in the Google Drive either. Great. Give me a second here.
I have it and I can read it if you'd like.
That'd be great. Thank you, Bill.
All right. I'll put my glasses on for this. Public hearing notice, the Upton Conservation Commission will conduct a public hearing pursuant to MS General Law Chapter forty-eight, Section thirty-two A on Wednesday, April ten, twenty twenty-four at seven P M. Remote via Zoom to consider the proposed and updated Town of Upton Stormwater Management Bylaw, Chapter two forty-two, as well as the new proposed Town of Upton Regulations, Chapter three twenty-five Stormwater, to reflect updates required in Massachusetts MS four general permit, such to be submitted to the warrant for special town meeting. A copy of the full text of the updates to the Upton Wetland Bylaw can be viewed on the Town of Upton Conservation webpage, HTTPS, WWW dot Upton mad dot gov, Document Center Index dash seven seven-three, or in the Conservation Office, located at One Main Street, Upton zero one five six eight, second floor. All interested parties are invited to participate. This meeting will be held remotely. The information for remote participation will be available on the Upton website, Upton MA official website civic plus dot com, com, Christine Scott Chair, Conservation Commission, Mr. Tell from Worcester Tel Ram and Gazette, March twenty-six twenty-four and April two twenty twenty-four.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Okay, so just wanted to start with comments or a survey, a summary of the changes.
If I may?
Yes.
So as a, just to preface the, the presentation that Melissa from Beta is here with me, and she's going to do a very brief presentation highlighting the, the changes that we want to bring to the attention of the board, so that the board can have an involved discussion and make a decision. My hopes tonight is that we have a decision tonight, and we adopt any changes that the commission wants to make, because we're, we're under the gun for timeframe on this. It has to make it for the town meeting, and I won't get another shot at it after this one. So as, as the commission is fully aware, our, our NIPD's permit has authority over our stormwater MS four, and our stormwater here in Upton is, is shared between, the Public Works Department is responsible for our annual reporting, and our permit, and we do a new permit every five years. We started doing this in two thousand and three, and our, our bylaws, which are adopted at town meeting, are governed by the regulations which are overseen by our Conservation Commission. Part of our five, last five-year permit mandated that we update our bylaws, in particular, those that are specific to post-construction. And when we were working with Beta to do this, we realized that we really hadn't visited, revisited this bylaw and regulations in a long time. We had kind of an outdated regulation. Beta is, my humble opinion is one of the authorities in New England on stormwater. They do a fantastic job. We've been using for years. Most of the communities in New England use Beta for their, their go-to for their regulations. And so I asked them to update all of our regulation format to make it more suitable for what we see today in, in most of the communities and cities and towns in the Commonwealth. So having said that, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa, because I know you have a very busy agenda. And Melissa and I met with Mary earlier, so we, we kind of have an idea of the things we needed to talk about and highlight. And I'm, I'm going to turn it over to Melissa if it's okay with the chair and let her do her presentation.
Thank you, Dennis. All right, Melissa is all yours now.
All right, thank you so much. Melissa Recos from Beta Group. As I said, we've been working in the town for quite a while now. I'm going to see if I can share my screen. I just have a brief presentation. To hit the highlights here. Can you all see my screen?
Yeah.
The presentation? Okay. Um. All right, so the MS four permit in kind of the town status, just to give a brief overview, the MS permit, MS four permit comes from the Clean Water Act. Here I have, MS four is for municipal separate storm sewer system, the drainage system in town. And in areas of Massachusetts where there's certain population density, you're required to comply with the MS four permit, the basis of that being in more population density. It affects the stormwater quality, the amount of pollutants getting into it. So for Upton, you have the West River and the Mill River that are both impaired. For metals nutrient and West Rivers also impaired for nutrients and chloride, and then they're tributary to the Blackstone River, which has metals equal phosphorus turbidity. So these are the things that the town has to deal with. And as you can see on the map here, it is not your entire town that's in the MS four area. It's the, based on population, you know, around Main Street here, this hatched area. Also, as you can see, there's two types of hatch here, because as the census is done at various points in time and the permit's updated, that area grows. It's grown from two thousand is the hatch here, and then in twenty-ten, it was updated to include more areas. So we only expect this to become a bigger lift for the town as more of the town has developed. So there are six minimum control measures associated with the MS four permit, and we've been working with DPW on compliance for these. They're listed here. Most of what we do with DPW is associated with good housekeeping and maintaining the drainage system. So minimum control measures four and five have to do with regulations of during construction and then new and redevelopment post-construction. So the permit requires that additional regulations be put into place for stormwater management systems. A couple items here that are required, that are not currently in your regs and need to be updated are the requirements for standards such as retention. Removal of TSS has been increased to ninety percent and eighty percent for redevelopment, ninety for new development. And then total phosphorus, annual load reduction, removal of sixty percent for new development, fifty percent for redevelopment. Couple of the other things related to regulations that are, you know, were there in the past but need to be ramped up are, it's, it's not so, it's not sufficient to just do maximum extent practical anymore for a lot of these redevelopment projects. They really need to be doing more, because that is where we are going to improve our water quality, is where the development exists now in making those sites better. There's also an emphasis on LID techniques and BMPs to address those specific pollutants of concern. And then, of course, instruction of inspection of construction sites for erosion control, and then the follow-up for as-built BMP maintenance and record collection. So these are the things that the permit is requiring towns to add to or increase in their existing stormwater regulations. So I just wanted to hit the key changes that we're proposing with the revised bylaw and regulation package that you have. So as you know, you had a bylaw and a regulation, these two companion documents. However, there's a lot of overlap in those two documents and a lot of repeating things. It's a little difficult to, to follow. So this new bylaw and regulations package that we've provided to you organizes it, so it's a little easier to follow. There are three articles. The first is general provisions. The second is very specific to illicit discharge regulations and prohibiting them. And then Article three is the stormwater management review process that you all go through with proposed projects. The way these are organized and put together, we worked with, as Dennis said, many communities. We worked with the Naponton River Watershed Association to come up with this package of bylaws and regulations. So there's communities within that watershed and outside of that watershed that have, already have this bylaw and regulation package in place and have been using it for a number of years now. So we feel like it's, it's actually been fine-tuned a couple times over the last couple of years, as we've seen communities use them, and we've improved them over time. So we feel pretty good about the setup that we have here. So another proposed change that we have is the review thresholds. So in looking at your existing thresholds, you have notification for five thousand square feet to an acre or a hundred cubic yards or more of stockpile. And then you have a permit, a full permit process for one acre or more for alteration of drainage areas. And then kind of sprinkled, sprinkled in your erosion control plan requirements, you have significant impact projects, I noticed, that have many different triggers to get that erosion control plan review done. So the review thresholds that we have in the proposed bylaw kind of simplifies that. It has fifteen hundred square feet to twenty thousand square feet for that administrative review, so that the idea there is to capture all those significant impact projects that you're looking to get reviewed under the erosion control plans, and they have to submit that and get that reviewed through your agent. And then permit for plans over twenty thousand square feet. So it's bringing that threshold down a little bit from what you had at an acre to capture more properties or more projects, I guess I should say. The proposed bylaw and regulation meets those MS four standard requirements for retention, TSS and phosphorus reduction. It updates the definitions and makes sure that your regulations and your bylaw are compliant with what MS four is requiring. And then lastly, the proposed regulations include additional improvements such as increased rainfall data, some soil testing requirements, and just current engineering design practices that we found, you know, are helpful for the peer review process and to make better projects, you know, as we see these weather changes. These are all things also that will be consistent with the new Wetland Protection Act stormwater regs that are coming out soon. So just to kind of close out my presentation here, the benefits of the bylaw and regulations are really for MS four compliance, you, you have to update to their standards to make it easier to follow for applicants, for your agent and for review staff. Moving content out of the bylaw and into the regulations, so that'll allow for easier updates in the future. You don't have to go back to town meeting. You make tweaks to what's in the regulations. It, as I said, it will be consistent with the Wetland Protection Act stormwater regulation updates that we anticipate. Lowering that threshold for review is proactive and it may sound like a little more work, but in the end, I think it avoids construction enforcement later if you get to review more of these projects, even through the administrative review proactively. And then lowering the threshold for permitting shares that responsibility of stormwater management and treatment with your private development and your site owners, because the most efficient way to treat pollutants is before they get into your stormwater. Once they get into your stormwater, then it becomes your DPW's problem to deal with, because when it's coming out that pipe at the end, they have to meet these requirements under the MS four permit. So if you can bring that threshold down and get more review, more projects reviewed under your permit process, then it shares that responsibility for stormwater management and preventing the pollutants from getting into the waters to begin with. So that's what I have for a presentation and overview. I know you have a busy agenda, but I want to make sure to leave time for questions. If anyone has specific questions on the package that's presented or any, any comments for us.
Thank you, Alyssa. Do we have questions or comments for Melissa or Dennis? Mary, what were your thoughts about this?
Um, maybe I'll just take, I know I sent you all an email. It's, it, the thresholds is a change, so I just wanted people to understand, you know, what it's, it's going to mean. And I'll pull just a few images to help people understand, you know, kind of what we're talking about here. All right, so this is a, a new single-family house going in. It's just approximately an acre. Here's another one. This, we might remember, this was a recent determination we did at forty-four Hartford Ave. North. And so this one is just over five thousand square feet. So just to give you an idea of what types of things would be included. Here's more, two more single-family houses. You'll see this one is well over an acre. This one is under an acre in the disturbance. I only found one single-family house that was below the twenty thousand square foot threshold. I mean, I'm sure there's more. This was just a quick. So I think for most new single-family houses, we'd see them as a a permit before the board, including a butter notification and public hearing, kind of like an NOI basically, except without the form. So it's basically on that level of what would appear before the board. So it would, it gives us a lot of review power, makes, you know, sure that, you know, stormwater is properly implemented. And let me just, here's another small one. So this is, just shows the lower end of the threshold. This is a garage that's going in on someone's property. And so this would be something that would be reviewed by me administratively if we go with the fifteen hundred square feet is the low end for a threshold. So just to give you guys an idea of what the changes would be. So it gives us a lot more latitude and looking at, making sure every project has erosion controls and looking at the stormwater that's going off on these lots and catching, like, for example, this one. I did talk to this gentleman, but I feel like he went closer to the buffer zone, because the wetlands over here than he should have. His, his garage is outside of it, but he did extra clearance. So it does get us on more properties and stuff like that. So I just, like I said, I want the board to consider, I think it will be, you know, more public hearings for new single-family homes at that twenty thousand square foot. We could maybe make it thirty, which would be in the middle between the twenty thousand and our old threshold of an acre. So but, and the low end, you guys can think about that, too. Those are the things, anything between fifteen hundred and twenty thousand, I would be reviewing in the office. So right now, I'm just, right now, I've been reviewing things administratively that have had been more than the five thousand square feet. So.
So Mary, these projects will be reviewed for stormwater and not the Wetlands Protection Act?
Yeah, these, um, well, if there was wetlands on the property, it would not require, then they wouldn't have to get this stormwater permit. It's, I think it's the same as it is now. So if there were wetlands, we would review it as we have been. But this will, we'll end up looking at a lot of, you know, almost every new construction in town in one way or another. Every new single-family home would fall under this pretty much in some form or another, either review by me or review by the board. I mean, most, it seems like most new single-family homes are disturbing more than twenty thousand square feet of, um, so.
Thank you.
And we, I don't, I didn't, I forgot to ask Amy, like, how many new single-family homes? Because I, I end up approving the building permits for them. You know, we are looking at a lot of them already. So just maybe not in as much detail. Because I do look at the building permits when they go through.
Do we have other questions or discussion points?
Yeah, Spike, I have a question or two. I know we don't have a lot of time maybe to go into weeds too much, but I just want one clarification. I think you know the answer to this, but this does apply to the whole town, not just the MS four area that was hatched in the presentation. That's correct, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And the second question I have, and I don't have, I don't have it called up, but I looked at the warrant article, and I just want some clarification. Is town meeting approving just the bylaw or the bylaw and the regulations? And the way the, the actual bylaws written right now is that the commission is the stormwater authority, and, and they're supposed to approve the regulations. So what are we asking town meeting to do?
You're asking town meeting to approve the bylaw, and the commission is the authority.
Right. And I think someone should be ready to make that clearer when, when the, when the article is read. I don't have it in front of me, but I can look it up in a minute. But the article, I think, mentions regulations, which is a little bit confusing. So warrant article.
Sure, I'll revisit that, Mike, with town manager and, and Beta, and just take a look at the way we, we wrote it. Maybe we can put some additional information to clarify that a little better, but the commission is, the commission is the authority for the regulation.
I understand, yeah. And then I had once, one question. I was actually looking at the bylaw, and there's a reference in there for H two C one twelve watershed. I'm not sure that's explained anywhere. Maybe I missed it, but it's, it's actually in the definitions for off-site compliance. You know, what is that? Is that, is that defined somewhere else? Or is it just?
Let me double check. It, what it's referring to is the Huck twelve basin that's a formal delineation you can get off of Mass GIS for a watershed area. So for that particular section, it's saying that if there's some circumstance where a developer says, I cannot implement the stormwater regulations and meet the infiltration requirements on my site, because I have bedrock, I have bad soils or whatnot, the commission would have the ability to say, okay, well, then we would like you to provide mitigation on another site, potentially a town-owned site within that Huck twelve basin, so that you're still in the same watershed area.
Okay.
That, that, that's what it comes down to. I can go through and see make sure that there's a definition in there, but I think.
Yeah, I think maybe you could add a definition up in the same section. I didn't see it. Anyway, thank you. That explains it.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
We have other questions or comments?
I, I have a question. Sandy Lejoy. Have we decided what size of project? Did you say the fifteen? What are the sizes of the, of the project that we need to review? You, you quoted some numbers. Twenty thousand and fifteen thousand was a small one.
The way that it's written right now is an administrative review would be for fifteen hundred square feet to twenty thousand. So that would be an administrative review by the agent. Yeah. And then over twenty would be a full permit review by the commission.
Okay, I, I didn't get that range. I, I didn't, I thought it was something that was going to be decided. Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that's how it's written. If we want to change, I think there's some flexibility to change it if we, if we want to.
So Mary, are they going to hire someone to help you out with this? Hours or something?
I don't know.
Sounds like it's going to be quite involved, not that, that's what we're talking about tonight. So.
There is a mechanism within the, the bylaw that allows the commission to hire a peer reviewer at the expense of the applicant if you wanted to do that. I'm not sure if you do that right now for your larger site reviews, but that is, there is a mechanism in there for that.
Oh, that's good.
We have other questions or comments tonight? Now, Mary and Alyssa, where, what's the next step for us tonight?
I think Dennis would like it if we vote to recommend that these get approved at town meeting. That's the next step for us. Either that or we continue it, continue it to the next meeting, but that leaves us very little time. So.
My, my hope through the chair is that you recommend it tonight with any changes that you would like. And, and keep in mind, I'm going to reiterate, these are your regulations. So I want you to be comfortable with them, but I'm kind of under the gun for time.
Does anyone have questions or comments about the changes that we made?
I just had a question. This is David. So, so Mary, since you'd be bearing the brunt of this, do you think the fifteen hundred square feet is maybe a little too low? I mean, do you think, is it worth getting those or?
Um, fifteen hundred and maybe a little low. I mean, I think yeah. When I looked at that garage that was going up, so that, that's going to capture like small additions and garages and stuff like that. For example, if you guys remember Twelve Stoddard, his addition was approximately fifteen hundred square feet of disturbance. So it's going to capture pretty much, you know, any kind of addition, swimming pools, that kind of stuff. It's going to capture a lot of that kind of disturbance. So I mean, we may, may want to stick with the five thousand on the low end or, or maybe not. And I, I guess I was also thinking in terms of the, you know, how many end up going to agendas for the board, you know, the twenty thousand square feet, wondering if we wanted to bump that up to thirty. Obviously, an acre is pretty high, but or maybe we like the twenty, because that gets every, you know, it's going to get us, we're going to be able to look at a lot of stuff. So we might like that.
There's value to seeing more properties. Yep.
Uh, to the chair.
I'm sorry, Dennis. This is Mike. I would you know, like to stick with what's proposed. I think if I understood correctly from Beta, the regulations and the bylaw are sort of, no offense, Beta, but Beta tested in other towns. And if, if, if our expert here on the call feels that those thresholds are reasonable, then, then I think we should, should go with them.
Are you making a motion?
Well, no, I'm not yet. I do have a you know, I, I do have a question about regulations and bylaw on the town, on the, on the town meeting warrant. First off, I think, you know, I, I someone should, I would, I would support maybe make a motion that we accept changes to the bylaw, but not the regulations, because we might want more time on that. Also, you know, there might be changes potentially to the bylaw at town meeting that would affect the regulations. But here's the thing. I'm reading, I'm looking at Article twenty-nine. Dennis, is it just one article in town warrant?
That's it.
All right. Well, then I, there's a little bit of a concern here. All right, well, then I, it's a little bit of a concern here. I'm reading it. And it doesn't mention bylaw. It just says, the title is post-construction stormwater management regulations. And then it mentions regulations and it mentions regulations. Again, and it doesn't mention bylaw anywhere is. I think you need to get with uh. Our town manager and maybe even town council to see if there's if there's a significant problem here.
I think we had council review it, but I'll go back and take a look at that, Mike. And I'm certain that the the objective on town floor is the bylaw and the bylaw refers to the regulations.
Understand that, but but you've got, you've got a warrant article that's not informing the public that. Um, there's proposed changes to town bylaw right now. It doesn't, the the word bylaw is not, it's not anywhere in that article.
It's in the first sentence, Mike.
Oh, it is in there. All right, excuse me. To revise, no, okay, correct, I missed that. Okay, here's the problem, you know, it it, yeah, I thanks, Bill, it is in there. I missed that first sentence of. Reading it, but then it goes on to to talk about regulations too, so. Um, I think the ch- I don't know, I think the change I would make is that we asked town meeting just to approve. The bylaw, assuming that um. You know, um, this article is okay, as written. It does say bylaw once, but it but I wish the heading said, didn't say regulations. It says. Post-construction store or management regulations, not bylaw, so.
I'll circle back around to that tomorrow.
Okay, but. But Dennis, would you be okay if we um? You you know, if we just propose to town meeting changes to the bylaw rather than uh. Regulations and let the regulations uh. Go to a a conservation commission hearing.
Let me uh, let me answer your question with a question to Melissa. Melissa, for for. Um, assisting the the commission with a better understanding of the process. Let's say that the the meeting goes through tonight and the commission approves the regulations. The town meeting goes through and approves the bylaw. How soon and through what process could this commission make changes or tweaks to that current regulation? So let's say, for instance. Um, Mary starts reviewing a lot more than she anticipated she was gonna have to. And her worst fear came through in the fifteen hundred criteria is just too much. It's thrown too much at her. How soon and what kind of a process would be required for this commission to change that?
So um, I agree, town meetings should be approving the bylaw and the bylaw would include that threshold for fifteen hundred to twenty thousand. So in order to change that threshold, you would have to go back to town meeting um to. Increase that. Um, the regulations, if you get the bylaw in place at ta- at town meeting. I think the commission can go through the process of the um regulation through your public hearing and adopting that. You can take a little time. Um, that's why we moved a lot of things into the regulation. And just the skeleton in the bylaw so that you have more time and leeway to um. Change those regulations. So if Mary found that, you know, fifteen hundred is is a lot, you could. You could um reduce the amount of review for that fifteen hundred square foot. Administrative review, or you could make it a checklist, or you could, you know, you could do something, Mary, on your end, because it's your administrative review, so it's really. The amount of effort that you wanna put in on that. Um, so I think it's the twenty thousand that is the bigger number. Because that's the one that kicks people to a full permit and a public hearing process and a notification and things like that, so. Um, if you were. You know, looking at the numbers, I think the administrative review, you have a lot of leeway to make that what. You want it to be or what you have the ability to do based on your workload. If that makes sense, so.
So now I can answer your question.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Dennis, I'm sorry.
So now I can answer your question, now that the commission has heard that. So, no, I don't feel comfortable with us. Taking longer to come up with what we want for the um. For the regulations and this commission voting it, simply because I only have till the end of June. To prove to the D E P through their consent order that this this commission has adopted the regulations. So I don't have a lot of time.
Okay, um, through the chair, Dennis, I. Uh, that's that's fine, but I do have one kind of generic question. I'm not sure anyone can answer that online, but. Uh, the attorney general has to approve changes to the bylaw. Is that correct or not? And if.
Yes.
And if they do. Uh, does the town have to wait? Uh, until the attorney general approves those bylaw changes before uh. The commission say starts administering the bylaw under the regs? Is is there a gap or does this bylaw go into effect, you know, um? Right after town meeting or do, does the town have to wait? For uh attorney general approval before it can start implementing the changes in the bylaw?
Think we have to wait for um the state, it's like six months.
Yeah.
The one that we just passed last November, that just finally made it to the. The code, I believe.
Yeah.
So so we do have ti- in a sense, we have time, and I think Dennis will have satisfied the state because they know that we have to wait to. That period anyway.
I mean, we could conceivably to to help Dennis out, we could approve the regulations and then uh. Uh, you know, ASAP basically and then uh but not implement them and then maybe make some changes in the regulations after um. You know, we get the um. Feedback and hopefully approval from attorney general, so. I mean, I guess we're not expecting much trouble from attorney general. I would guess, Melissa, since um. You know, this is kind of something that's been approved in other towns, pretty much, right, according to what you said, so.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but, okay, all right. Thank you.
So with that said, do we have a motion to accept the? Bylaw changes?
I'll make that motion. To accept, to accept uh proposed uh changes to the. Upton Stormwater Management bylaw um. And uh, and accompanying regulations.
Okay, let's do a voice vote. Press I.
Uh, David, I.
Sandy, I.
Mike, I.
Marcela, I.